Good evening, everyone. The February 2024 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting will now be called to order. Join us in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. Do the flag in the United States of America. As we are a republic, we stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, everyone. Madam Mayor.
Good evening, the deceased residents for the month of January 2024. Mary Stinson. Louise Roland Heller. Megan Kelly. And Joseph Nolan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Willert, you deliver the roll call. Okay. Roll call. Mr. Heller.
Present.
Ms. Fulvio.
Present.
Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mr. DePlicky.
Present.
Ms. Swicki.
Present.
Mr. Papas.
Present.
Mr. Burke.
Present.
Madam Lesley.
Present.
Mr. Wills is not here, but Mr. Stone.
Present.
Okay. Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Willert's here. Mrs. Voil.
Present.
Chief Montellum.
Here.
Chief Weiss.
Here.
Roll call complete. Thank you, sir. Ms. Ford. Good evening, Ms. Ford. How are you?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Short report this month. January flew by. Student council this month, though, throughout the month of January, we collected bingo prizes for Fair Acres Geriatric Center. Thank you to all who donated such fun and interesting prizes to this very successful collection. Next month is our kids' heart challenge. The heart challenge is a fun and exciting opportunity for our children to learn about heart health and raise money while helping others for the American Heart Association. Last year, Coburn Elementary raised over $10,500, and we're very excited for this year's event. All students will participate in this school-wide event on February 22nd regardless of donations. And then also, thank you to the Borough Council for allowing us to use the community center. We have our special persons dance. Coburn Elementary Special Persons Dance is scheduled for this Friday, held here at the community center and graciously hosted by our PTL. Following the fantastic turnout and success of last year's event, we're very grateful for the opportunity for a more spacious venue right here at the community center. So students who are participating extended invitations to a special adult for an evening of music and dancing and memories. Last year, we were thrilled at the presence of so many father-daughter, mother-son pairs and, you know, grandparents and aunts and uncles, and it was a lot of fun. Everybody was all dressed up and danced the night away. So we're really looking forward to that dance again this Friday at the community center. So thank you. And that's all I have for Coburn. And if you want to see what's happening daily at Coburn, follow us on Twitter, @CoburnEyes. That's it. Happy Valentine's.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. See you next month. Everybody, the first public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, kindly approach the podium and state your name and street for the record. Going once. Going twice. First public discussion session is closed. Chief Weiss, sir. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
All right. So for the month of January 2024, the Brookhaven Borough Police Department initiated or assigned a total of 951 CAT assignments through Delcom. And some of the noteworthy incidents were: we had one robbery, which was actually a retail theft where there was an employee that was assaulted, so it made it a robbery. We had 18 thefts, five criminal mischief or vandalisms, six fraud, one weapons offense. We had seven DUIs for the month. Five were controlled substances, and two were alcohol-related. We had four public drunkenness, one disorderly conduct, 21 narcotics investigations, seven animal complaints, three solicitor complaints, 25 suspicious conditions, nine disturbances or domestic disputes, two civil complaints, 72 medical assists, one mental health response, 34 assist other departments, 20 alarms, 16 vehicle crashes, and 30 hazardous conditions or assist motorists. Our arrests for the month, there were 55 adult arrests. There were 13 juvenile arrests. Our department issued 259 citations for the month. There were 31 parking violations issued, and 274 warnings were issued. Administratively, as we're all aware, we had a busy month with the storms and all that came along with that in the month of January. Just wanted to say I appreciate everyone on the emergency management team working together to handle all that needed to be done. I would also like to congratulate Officers Connor and Yusef, as they will complete their probationary year tomorrow. I thank them both for their commitment to our borough and our police department, and I look forward to having them with us for many, many years. Our Officer of the Month this month is Greg Martin. Officer Martin has been with our police department for over 17 years. He works hard every day and is always willing to help out our younger officers. Officer Martin has recently been sharing, he's very knowledgeable in commercial vehicle laws, and he's been sharing that knowledge and helping our younger officers to embrace that new skill, because it is a real skill set that you have to kind of hone in on. It's not as easy as your normal traffic violations. So I appreciate all that he's doing to help us get our younger officers up to speed with commercial vehicles enforcement. So for these reasons, he has been selected as our Officer of the Month, and I congratulate him. Community, the only thing I have is, I reported on this last month, but I feel like we need to address it again this month. I'm still receiving several complaints from residents for streets in our borough regarding speeding and stop sign violations. I'm just, again, pleading with everyone, this is our, these are our neighborhoods, and to take care of them, make sure we're stopping at stop signs and not speeding through the residential areas. I'm sure you may have noticed our school zone at Coburn, we've been enforcing that. Even the speed limit, the school zone, we've been having issues there, so we are enforcing that, and that is a zero tolerance. It's a pretty hefty fine, so again, I'm asking people, we don't want to have to go that route, we're just asking you to please monitor your speed. And lastly, as far as training for the month, Detective Wetton attended his monthly SWAT training. He also attended an investigative training course through the FBI that he was, they extended an invitation for him to attend. It was a free training for him, since he's on the task force. Sergeant Eastman, Detective Wetton, and Officer Zebby attended for firearms training. That's all I have.
Thank you, chief. Chief Montellum, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, council, mayor, and residents. Brookhaven Fire Company's January 2024 fire report. We had a really busy month. We, the fire company was bonded to six working building fires, and we had two accidents with a trap, when people trapped in vehicles, and our ambulance was just nonstop. But our report for the month, two fire incidents in the borough, 18 non-fire, 35 mutual aid, four drills, total of 59 for the month. We had $20,000 loss on contents and $550,000 of property endangered in the borough for the month. No firefighter injuries, no civilian injuries. Our manpower, 59 calls, averaged 12 firefighters, 409 hours in service for the month, four training sessions, averaged 25 firefighters, 188 hours of training for the month. Following incidents in Brookhaven Borough, we had a building fire, 408 Sir Gallohan Drive. It was a runaway heater. Fire was contained to the heater. 4580B Edgemont Avenue came in as a fire alarm at the Dunkin' Donuts. We discovered that the building was full of smoke at Papa John's next door. We had a fire in the HVAC unit on the roof, contained to the roof unit itself. Three accidents, Upland Road, and one subject was extricated, that was at Upland Road at 352. 352 in Maple, we had another accident with injuries, and we had an accident with injuries at Brookhaven Road and Park. Assisted Upland Fire Company on an accident I-95 South at mile 4.9 post. Aston Township assisted on a building fire, 460 Old Pendle Road, that was also a working house fire. Assisted Garden City Fire Company on an accident with entrapment, where people stuck in the vehicle, at 117 Chestnut Parkway. Assisted the Chester Fire Department on two working building fires, one on Mary Street, the other one at 523 East 22nd Street. And we assisted Parkside Fire Company on a working building fire at 138 West Garrison Road. Assisted Chester Township on two building fires, one at Centas Corporation on Milton Drive, that was a working fire in the dryer. And we had a building fire at Toby Farms Intermediate School. That school was also filled with smoke. We had, our training for the month was our annual SCBA training with our members doing search and rescue in our garage scenario with just zero visibility with our smoke machine, and they, they're going through their annual training there, and we did some SCBA bottle refill training. Additionally, we met with our recruitment and retention marketing group to do a photo shoot with the company, doing some evolutions. The actual lady coming out to film was actually on scene when we went to the working fire in Chester Township at Centas, so she probably got some great pictures for our recruitment campaign. Our branding logo pic for our fire company, you'll start to see it. We're going to have some signs going out and advertising on social media. Our slogan with our company patch is "Bringing Calm to Chaos Since 1922." So that's our branding image, working with our marketing company. It's a pretty good slogan, we kind of like it a lot. So that's it on the fire end. Our ambulance report for July 2024, they're basically driving the wheels off the ambulance. 256 ambulance calls for the month. 141 people transported to the hospital. 164 of them were ALS dispatch, 92 were dispatch BLS. Like I said, 295 calls for the month of January, so everybody's been busy on fire end.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Madam Mayor.
Good evening. I'd like to congratulate Officer Martin for being our Officer of the Month. I'd like to thank the Boy Scouts, PAC 493, they were fifth graders, they came up last Thursday night to learn about local government, learn the mayor's role, council's role, and basically everything about Brookhaven, so that they could earn their government patch. And I'd like to thank Public Works for all their long hours during the two snowstorms. Everybody did a great job and emergency management with the rainstorm that we had. So thank you, everyone. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wills, you are much younger and better-looking tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some of you may have noticed I am not Mr. Wills, he's unable to attend the meeting. I think bringing to close a four-plus-year, perhaps, perfect attendance record, so I'm pitching in and filling in for one night here. Mr. Wills did complete his monthly report, which is on file with the borough as he normally does. The only action item on the agenda from his report tonight for council's consideration is a proposed resolution waiving a 90-day timeline or deadline for the submission of a plan to the Delaware County Recorder of Deeds for the ongoing project of the Brookhaven Shopping Center. So this is work that Borough Council approved some time ago, and the plans under the ordinance are required to be submitted within 90 days, and they were not submitted on time. So this resolution just proposes that we extend that deadline an additional 30 days from tonight to give the owner of the facility the opportunity to record those plans.
That's for the pharmacy expansion.
Correct. So the interior corner where they built the space out, about 7,500 square feet, I believe. 5,400 square feet, sorry. So that work is currently ongoing, and this is just sort of a procedural remedy to avoid the Delaware County Recorder of Deeds rejecting the plan.
You care to read it? It's on the agenda, it's unnecessary to read it.
No, I don't.
Okay. Mr. Wills generally reads them slowly and carefully. Who wants to motion, council?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any questions? Aye. Motion carries.
That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome back. Oh, temporarily. Mr. Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under my report, I see several action items. The first one is the DCNR grant that I'll defer back to you, Mr. President, to handle on your report. Secondly, we have the authorization to bid for the 2024 street resurfacing, need a resolution to, or authorization to do so.
What is the pleasure of the council?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any questions? Motion carries.
Next is the gym floor refinishing. We need authorization to solicit bids for the refi, refinishing of the gym floor.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any questions, any opposed? We all agreed previously that the gym floor is in need of resurfacing.
Next, the sewage treatment plant, there is a chain broke on one of the units over there, so we need approval to replace the clarifier number two drive train chain in amount of $15,744.40.
Ms. Swicki, with your Jeopardy buzz, are you ready? Okay. Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or any questions? Constant spending down there? Motion carries.
The Sampson's Park Multipurpose Court, we need authorization to advertise the bids for that project.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed questions? So I wouldn't imagine after three years, no one will have questions. Motion carries.
And then we have the 20, the winter season of 2024, 2025. This would be authorization to participate in the Co-Stars contract for road salt. This is next winter. We're worried about next winter already.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor, we have a tie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No questions? Motion carries.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I got a bunch of things, sorry. I have an OLC committee update. The Our Lady of Charity had their kickoff meeting on Wednesday, January 31st. We had full attendance, near-full attendance. The only person that missed the meeting, and it's a pretty large committee, just happened to have the date wrong, which was fine, so in reality, we had a full committee of 13. We, we meet again this Wednesday at 6 o'clock PM. The main agenda item for the first meeting, aside from introductions and going over project ideas, nothing official, was to decide on a voting mechanism by which we will measure the 70% public support that the council demands. That voting mechanism will be in-person voting at Borough Hall. That is coming up on my agenda, down the list a little bit. For now, I need a motion to approve the January 2nd, 2024 council reorganization meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No questions in the motion? Motion carries. Motion to approve the January 8th, 2024 council meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No questions in the minutes? Motion carries. Motion through the January 22nd, 2024 council workshop minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve a resolution for the DCNR land grant application for the possible Our Lady of Charity acquisition. This will be a, and stop me from wrong, Mr. Catania, $1.5 million max with a 50% match, and the funds already received, the $500,000 grant already received can go towards the match. Am I, do I have that right? Yes.
Correct.
That means yes, you can just note.
County money can be used to match this grant.
Who wants to motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions on the motion? None opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to advertise a public hearing dated for Saturday, February 24th, 2024, at noon PM at the Brookhaven Borough Hall, to get public opinion. I don't like the wording in that, to, it's really a public hearing on the borough's acquisition of the Our Lady of Charity property. The public opinion will generally be decided by the voting the week after. That's, that's more of a public hearing to discuss the project as a whole, so. Who wants to motion?
I'll make the motion.
And we should note that the, one word in the agenda was changed, but that should be fine. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Not opposed? No questions? Need a motion to advertise letters being sent to all Brookhaven residents with instructions on in-person voting to be held at Brookhaven Borough Hall between the dates of March 4th and March 8th from 8 AM.
From 10 AM.
Or, or, March 8th, I'm sorry, from 10 AM to 8 PM. On the acquisition of the Our Lady of Charity property. Mr. Burke?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed questions? Everyone okay with that? So it will be staffed by volunteers from the committee. We all have a locked ballot box. The letters will send out a detail. This will cost X amount. This will cost each taxpayer X amount annually. We have this much grant money currently. We're seeking this much grant money. Probably the fact that council will do everything that they can to prevent a tax increase from this, and we will move money from elsewhere, because that is our goal, based on previous discussions. Did we pass that? I'm half asleep. Yeah? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. On to the next. Motion to accept the Teamsters Collective bargaining agreement, doesn't note in the agenda, but that is the Public Works CBA.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions or any opposed? Motion carries. And last, there will be an executive meeting immediately following this meeting concerning personnel and other matters. That's all I have. Ms. Swicki.
Yes, I do have, as usual, a bill list, and we do have it for February. There are general fund bills, which were, I have it here. Thirty-three thou, thirty-six thousand, thirty-five, sorry. The print keeps getting smaller and smaller. $35,622.29, the sewer fund for this month, fifteen thou.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, I know, it's, print is terrible. And there's also the bill that we will be paying for Delkor, which will be going out shortly. That's $1,098,924, which is people who paid last year. How Delkor, when you get Delkor's bill on our borough bill, the tax bill, you will notice that that's the bill for the following year. That's how it works. So really, when you paid it last year, what you're, what you're doing is that we collected the money, and Delilah has written a check, I've signed it, and it's going out to them this week. So that pays, we always pay later for Delkor. Like, they provide a service and then we get paid. So we're basically going to, today, pay the bills for sewer fund, general fund, and Delkor. So the total is $1,151,298.48 total. But that includes the payment for the residents who have paid in for Delkor. Now, some people pay in for the sewer plant, so that's on your tax bill, you'll notice, it's either one or the other that you're charged for. Okay? So I'm making the motion that we do pay the February bills, $1,151,298.48 today.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any questions in the motion? Motion carries.
That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swicki. Ms. Fulvio?
I have one action item for today. At the January 22nd council workshop, I proposed the formation of a sustainability committee, which would have the goal of fostering dialogue around environmental and sustainability matters in the borough, and also to pursue projects related to sustainability here, such as clean energy, the use of green space, et cetera. So now I would ask for a motion to approve the formation of the sustainability committee.
So moved.
Jump right on it, Mr. Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that wouldn't imagine any further questions?
Thank you, Ms. Fulvio.
Mrs. Heller.
Okay. I have two action items before I go into my report. So the first action item is to, motion to waive the low seasonal corral permit fee that is done almost every year. This is just for the season corrals, for all of their holiday or upcoming seasonal stuff that's usually done in the parking lot.
Is it just December, or is it anything they do during the year?
No, it's usually typically, they start the formation probably the end of February, and it goes until pretty much the beginning of September. We get the blessing from the fire marshal and the safety officers every year to ensure that the fire trucks get down there appropriately and nothing is blocking any of the e-brs and any of the pathways in the back area.
So you're making the motion, I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Counsel? All in favor? Anyone? Motion carries. Sorry, that was my fault, actually. I blame you.
Okay. My second motion is to remove the municipal bid for the vehicle, for the police vehicle number 27-3, a direct van corp, to sell as part of our lease program.
Signed upon, I believe, in November, so yes?
Correct. It was done in November, and that was my mistake last month in asking for it to be on municipal, so.
Not a worry. Who wants to second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or questioned? Motion carries.
Okay. So on to my report. So Town Watch met on Thursday, February 25th at 6:30 PM. So I need yous all to save the date for the Town Watch Annual Spaghetti Dinner that's going to be scheduled for Sunday, February 18th, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and that's going to be in the gym. It's going to be $12 for adults and $5 for children. There's going to be takeout options available, so bring your appetite. And they're having another meeting for the Town Watch on Thursday, the February 8th at 6:30 PM. Again, spaghetti dinner, make sure you're all there. Great time. The chef does a wonderful job of preparing the meals, so he does a great job, great job. And the bread is awesome.
Moving along?
Moving along. So the rec board met on Thursday, the 25th, at 7 o'clock. So we have a lot of upcoming events. I'm sure Tom's going to correct me if I missed anything. So Arful Aging is going to be held on Sunday, February 11th. There is going to be some type of Easter art work that will be done. That is a registered event, so please come up to the office to register. We will also be starting, I know it's very, you know, early, but we need to mention it, but Easter egg signups will begin on Monday, the 26th of February, until Thursday, March 21st. They're going to be during normal business hours, and evening signups are going to be on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. We're going to have our egg stuffing will commence on Tuesday, March 19th at 6:00 PM. So there's only about 900 million eggs that will need to be stuffed with 1,000 gazillion pieces of candy. We'll all have arthritis in our wrists by that time. Pictures with the Easter Bunny is going to be held on Saturday, March 23rd at 10:00 AM, and the Easter hunt will start exactly at 11:00 AM, and it happens very quickly. It's almost like, very scary. We'll have our first-ever spring fling dance for the 5th and 6th grade students from Pendelco Christian Academy and the Holy Family, and that's scheduled for Friday, April 5th, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and volunteers are always welcome. Heading to Tinseltown for a night out with a murder dinner and an old-fashioned whodunit a night out with a murder dinner and an old-fashioned whodunit is going to be scheduled for Friday, April 12th, at 7:00 PM. And starting in March for a trial basis at 9:00 AM on Saturdays, we're going to be doing a HIIT class, which is a high-intensity interval training, and it's going to be from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and it's going to be $5 a person, and you pay as you go. And that will be in the gym. I have also, and you'll have to bear with me on this one because it's a little lengthy. Thanks, Charles. The Brookhaven Recreation Board would like to welcome all interested residents ages 15 to 17 to join us for our very first Dungeons and Dragons campaign, Ghosts of Salt Marsh. Please don't ask me what it is. Ghosts of Salt Marsh is a high fantasy seafaring campaign for four to six players that will take characters up and down the Sword Coast, investigating mysteries ranging from a haunted mansion to an elaborate murder mystery. The first session will be on March 10th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the gym, for an explanation of the rules and for players to create their characters. The campaign will then officially begin on March 17th, with the group meeting every other Sunday thereafter. Please apply to play by doing the thing, I don't know what that is. Spots are limited, so don't delay. If there's any questions, please contact Kurt Mayer at 302-615-0480 for signup information. So, that's again Dungeons and Dragons. The multipurpose facility meeting we held on Monday, the 29th, as you heard, Mr. Catania, we put out authorization bid. That group has been meeting on and off for the last year or two, just to finalize the plans, and that included folks from the softball, so that we had their feedback and any suggestions that they would have. So, those reviews were going to be put into the plans. The plans were approved back in November, so we are moving forward with that project, hopefully to commence very soon. The Police Committee met on Tuesday, the 30th, at 6:00 PM to discuss personnel matters and an overview for our new Councilman, Dan Burke. So, it was a quick overview. And I want to thank Sergeant Habik for taking the time to meet with PAC 493 to learn about fingerprinting and forensic science, as well as all the cool investigating techniques. So, it's always great when we have that in our actions. The Cub Scouts will also be completing a service badge volunteering at Sampson Park this Thursday with a bunch of cleanup in the park. I want to wish Councilwoman Pappas a very happy birthday today. I also want to, between now and our next meeting, wish a happy birthday to Public Works Steve Reed, as well as Public Works Billy Deweese. And that's the end of my report.
Mr. Pappas, sir.
Just two items. Workplace safety meeting was held last month. We've been chosen to do a random audit by the state, which is basically a housekeeping on paperwork. There's no vehicle accidents involving Borough vehicles. We do have a work-related injury to one of the Public Works employees. It's still out. And we also had a fireman that was injured last month in a fire. We also had a slip and fall at the district court involving a citizen. That's the extent of the workplace safety meeting. As for that, the Historical Committee is always looking for volunteers. The volunteer is really just the prerequisite to be involved as a volunteer is basically having knowledge of the Borough, preferably an older family member that has witnessed a lot of change within the Borough and can provide any type of historical knowledge back to the Borough. That completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee held a meeting last month, January 18th. We discussed ways to better communicate and explain what the committee does and what ordinances are. We've also decided we're going to possibly revisit some old ordinances, see if the language needs updating, changing, or even if we need to remove some of the ordinances. I'd like to remind the public that our meetings are typically the third Thursday of every month from 6:30 to 8:00, and it's open to the public, except for this month. Unfortunately, there's a scheduling conflict, so this month, we will not be meeting. As Councilwoman Heller already mentioned, the Police Committee did meet, and I want to thank Councilwoman Heller for putting that together, as well as Mayor Leslie and Councilman Pappas, and of course, to Chief Weiss for your thorough report and explanation as to all the wonderful work that you've done since coming on board. So, thank you very much for that. And that is it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. DePulio.
Hello, everyone. My report today is centered around, I've got a, you know, report from Public Works of actions they've done through the month of January. We did have the two winter storms that hit us in the month and involved plowing and salting by the Public Works Department. And I know Dave Evans there was appreciative of, you know, making sure vehicles weren't all over the streets and making it easier for them to do their jobs, removing the snow. Also, we also had two very big rain events, and the Public Works had to respond to calls for down trees and flooding during those two significant rainstorms that occurred in January. Again, they responded, took care of the matters, and everything worked out fine. They finished their Christmas tree collection completed by gathering 253 trees and shredded all those trees for use for whatever they need in parks or gardens in the Borough. They also are going to start repairing and painting picnic benches in the area, so they're looking nice to have ready in the springtime. They renewed their permit with the 2024 Delaware County Waste Management Program. They renewed the permit. And their yearly maintenance on their automobiles in the Public Works Department, they did their yearly maintenance along with inspections for all their vehicles, so that was all completed. And beginning in early March, the Public Works Department employees will all do a bucket truck training program. So, that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Polo.
Good evening, everyone. So, I'm going to start off with buildings. I just want to mention, since we've hired Sean Guthrie, we have changed all our forms that we use. It's a cost savings to the Borough because we no longer have to go to the print shop to make copies for the next year. All those forms are not online yet, right?
Not yet.
Okay. They will all be PDF-writable, be very convenient for people to fill out their permits. So, for January, we had 31 permits applied for, 27 were issued. We had 19 UNO inspections conducted, 14 UNOs issued, four codes. I had four right the nose last month. 67 code issues, which is more than I've had for many months. 27 citations were written, 22 letters or emails. The rest, I handle by talking to people. And again, about 25 advertisement signs that were taken down from poles or on properties that shouldn't be. So, let's talk snow. Everybody remember, once the snow stops, you have 24 hours to clear your sidewalks. If a plow comes down the street, whether it's ours or Pendott, you have to re-clear them. Okay? A lot of people were not happy with me because they didn't clear their sidewalks. So, that's where most of the citations come. So, please clear sidewalks. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
So, with your time out, talking with people and books and stuff like that, my concern is always with the elderly or people that are handicapped accessible that need help with the snow removal. Is there a list that we have, or is there a way that we can generate that list so that we can maybe partner with the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts?
We've been discussing this. We don't have anything right now.
Okay.
And as one person who I cited, I have no idea how old anybody is in houses until I speak to people.
Okay.
So, but it's something we're looking into. I was hoping there'd be Boy Scouts, or there's no kids that go door-to-door anymore.
No, I know. But I feel that we can work and partner with the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts because there's a lot of service badges and volunteering badges that they can obviously work towards. And usually, when we have a snow event, they are off from school, so.
Correct.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fulvio. Mr. Leslie, sir.
Good evening, counsel. Good evening, residents. You are, look up for things here I did for the last month. Ross Clothing Store over there at the 3700 Black Edgemata Avenue, that's moving along. The guy just told me, excuse me, they're going to take down all the sprinklers now. You familiar with that, Charles? Did he come to you? So, I'll make sure he gets a hold of you. The mechanic shop will still stay operational over there, sprinklers on that side. Harbin Way is getting really close. Tri-State Alarm was over at Our Lady of Charity. All the fire alarms are back up and running over there. They're all inspected for another year, including the abandoned school. 3400 Edgemata Avenue, Summit Health is moving along very slowly. Papa John's at Dunkin' Donuts, the chief said about the heater fire in the roof unit. Came in as a fire alarm. Papa John's was full of smoke and natural gas. The heater was running away up there. So, what I wanted to bring up also, when PICO comes out and shuts the gas off on a commercial or residential property, they will not come back and turn it back on unless they hear from the fire marshal. And that goes with the electric also. So, if it's a weekend, it's going to be a little longer. So, after I call and give the secret code that they gave me to call, it's anywhere from 24 to 48 hours for them to come back out and turn your natural gas or your electric on. And they want an underwriter for the electric when they lock that meter out. So, One Lady on Sir Galahad was over 100 hours because that was the height of the storm, and they were all busy.
So, it's just commercial and residential? So, anytime PICO comes out?
Anytime PICO comes out in Borough and locks your gas out, they will not come back until I make a phone call. That's gas or electric. Okay? I spoke with the Chief of Police, the Delco 911 Center was originally going to order the fire marshal radio through the Police Department. They're kind of a little slow on that end, so the fire company is now ordering the mobile radio and portable for the fire marshal. They're a year out, but we had to get the order in for the 31st. Remember, Janice was telling you about it?
Absolutely.
Okay. PICO thing. Whoever called Pendott and got the potholes fixed in the Borough on the avenue, thank you.
Mr. Willer.
Who did it?
John.
Thanks, John. Appreciate that.
If not, he's taking credit.
It's always John.
Because we had some pretty bad potholes, and we don't want to tear up any fire trucks or ambulances.
Catania helped.
Thank you, Charles. And one last thing, I got to take the car to.
It was all Nora.
Howzers, because there's no heat in the car now.
Oh, goodness.
Yes.
Wow.
Anyway, thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Mr. Guthrie, anything, sir? All right. Dynamic duo. It opens the second public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, not named Tom Dykes, kindly approach the podium and state your name and street for the record. All right, we thought we'd get out of here. Good evening, Tom.
Hi there, everyone. Mrs. Heller carried everything through, except for one thing. Pickleball on Mondays, Monday afternoons from 1:00 to 4:00 and 6:00 to 9:00. Come on out. We're getting more and more people for each. Right now, they're actually over there. There's five or six people playing right now as we speak, so it goes through. So, we'll be continuing that through. It's at least through the end of February, but probably extending a little bit more if we can, like volunteer, or people who want to come out and help. So, come join. It's fun. Mr. Heller saw it tonight. He's like, oh, I can play that.
When my hand heals, yes.
Hand heals, so. If there's doubles out there, it's not so bad. Okay, so.
It looks pretty fun. It looks.
It is fun. They have fun. So, that's pretty legit.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else for public discussion?
I think that was the shortest.
That was the shortest you've ever spoken.
Mrs. Heller.
Going once, going twice. Second public discussion session is closed. Counsel, anything else? Side table? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Good night, everyone.